We are in open forum. Would anybody like to talk? All right. Then we are to the consent agenda, approval of the minutes, approval of bills, purchase orders, approval of the investments, gambling resolution for central care. Any questions or concerns? Can you get a motion to approve?
So move.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Home fair say aye?
Aye.
Pose, motion carried. Presentation, County Road 65 sidewalk project donation grant. Lisa, do you want to say anything first?
The city's been working on getting a trail connecting the downtown area to Jennie O., or a sidewalk excuse me, and we applied for a grant through State Farm and they generously have provided us with a $10,000 grant. And so, State Farm is here to write a photo off with the city. Thank you.
So first, Deanna, I'd like to thank you and Leon and State Farm for helping us with this project. Sidewalks aren't getting cheaper, it's getting tougher and tougher. And your generous donation of $10,000 for the grant is so appreciated. And we really appreciate you as businesses. You know, you guys have multiple businesses in our town, you do a lot for our community too, and giving back and giving of yourself. So, City and Mouse would really like to thank you for it. So, I'd like to give you a round of applause. Would you like to say anything?
I would just like to say that we are just grateful to have the opportunity to have business in town. And the city council, the city offices are always so easy to work with and we'd love to assist them. Anything we can do to help make our community safer and easier to work, we are happy to help.
Yeah, thank you again. And number two, Ana Santana is here from Jennie O. Turkey Store. Jennie O. generously donated $67,500 to the sidewalk project. And again, Jennie O. has been part of our community for generations. And over the last, you know, year, they have invested quite a bit of money in our community, and even more investments to come here in the future. And Jennie O. is a mainstay of our community and appreciate them so much too. So, you know, Ana, would you like to say something?
On behalf of Jennie O. Turkey Store, thank you. And again, like, you know, it's just wonderful to be able to be part of this project that's going on. And also, it's really nice that our team members and anybody going up and down that street would be a little bit safer as a walking. I know that I have walked that and some types of cars tend to get a little bit too close. So having the sidewalk, I think, is going to be great for our community.
Yes. Yes, I totally agree. So, again, I'd like to thank all of you for everything you do for our community to make it better and bring the future, you know, through. It's good we're adding on. So, again, just would like to say thank you for all you do for our community. So, we'll make it that simple for you. How about that? So, would you guys, do you guys want to stretch out the check for the TV too?
Sure.
Sure, might as well. Why don't you come and help us with that, Tony? You help on one side. You're my acting mayor, so you can help us. Bring here and let the people see how much they're investing in our community to help us with sidewalks. Again, thank you. Appreciate it. All right, we're up to reports. Chief Mouse?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. For our monthly statistics for May of 2019 in our traffic area, we had 33 citations issued, 147 verbal warnings and two written warnings. May 2019, we had 438 calls requests for service. And in 2018 was 599, so we were down by 161 calls for the month. And that brought us down 153 calls overall for the year. So, we were on ICR. 2126 last year, now we're on 1973. So, no real explanation. I think we had a few less ordinance violations, but overall, it's just a dip in activity for the year. 23 agency assists we responded to within and outside the city in Melrose. Seems to be a fair number of crashes in our area lately that we can help out with unfortunately, but whatever we can to help out around our area and get it back in the future. Some areas of note, River Fest events are coming up three and a month. So check the Beacon as well as the Mel's Chamber of Commerce, Facebook page and their website. What's all gonna be happening, parades on Saturday. Check for the route and everybody be ready for that. Carol did an article this week, or next week's paper about bikes and pedestrians, and how we need to do a little bit of sharing here and there, as well as where bikes should be operated to do things safely, as well as just give them the extra eyes out for those, so nobody's causing any accidents or having any issues. We do have some pending nuisance violations that'll probably come up on the council for July. Do be abated. Reports being believed on those will be getting to Attorney Demick's office in the next couple of days here. And then hopefully they resolve themselves, but maybe come before you. One or two reoccurring properties and a couple of other ones that you might just need a few more conversations with them, so they completely understand what we're looking for. Questions?
One real quick, I noticed there's 44 housing code violations. I'm assuming that was the spring walkthrough that you do every year and you pick out things and, okay.
Yeah, those all got compiled in May this year because of the late snowfall.
Oh yeah, okay. Sounds good, thanks.
All right, thank you, chief. Lisa, Community Development Director?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I have a few items to report on. The Riverview Redevelopment Grant Block, the store has had state funding approved by the legislature for the sales tax waiver and a remediation grant money of $643,729. MADA met regarding this project, and this will be discussed later this evening. The outdoor seating ordinance, after the last meeting that the city council had when it was recussed that the ordinance be shortened, we brought the shortened ordinance back to the planning commission, which is on Tuesday of this week. And they did recommend approval of the new revised ordinance. Staff's been working on a few drainage issues through town with the city engineer, and those are starting to get resolved. And there's just ongoing things we're working on with that. The MADA met on Tuesday morning of this past week, and they considered a possible land sale, which is on your agenda for later this evening. The land is located just south of Coburn's on the south side of the trail, on the east side of First Avenue Southeast, also south of Main Street. The property owners have been mowing the grass there for years, and they had kind of assumed, I think, that the property was owned by them, but it was still owned by the city, was transferred from railbank to city in the 90s. And the property owners would like to purchase this. MADA considered this at their meeting and recommended approval of that land sale. They also recommended that the property crosses the street to the west. If those property owners would like to purchase that, they recommended that that land sale also be completed, subject to the lots being consolidated with the lot that has the house on it. So it's clear that lots meet minimum lot sizes and such. Regarding the South River, the state legislature approved $737,000 for the Searns County Soil Water District and Water Conservation District regarding the river, which is part of the city's match. And then also, $2,768,000 for the Commission of Natural Resources for the agreement with the city to do the removal of the fixed elevation dam. Staff is meeting with LCCMR next week to go over some of the details regarding that. The goal is to try to work through and find a plan that'll work that would keep the lake level the same. The county held an auction of tax forfeited lots. There were several lots that were sold in daylight court. And then also, a lot that was, three lots actually, near Rose Park along the interstate that also sold. Building permits are coming along pretty well. St. Mary's new church permit is going to go out tomorrow or early next week. ProLiant has a permit for a new conference room. Coburn's is installing a new roof. Casey's is planning construction for July. They'll do a July demo and hope to be open in January. St. Mary's Church, EAW, we expect them to be submitting within the next week or two. That'll go to WSB for their review to determine whether it's complete. Once that determination is made, then it'll go to the 30-day comment period required by the [inaudible 00:39:59]. That is everything I have for update. Are there any questions?
Nope. Thank you. Scott isn't here. Did he have any, anything pressing? Just looked like parking ordinance, rental license, and city center HVAC agreement, huh?
Yep.
So, that's the two major. All right. Engineering, Engineering Department, Mr. Mike?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, you had my report, but I'd kind of go through it. And if you have any questions, please ask. The 2018 project, First Street and Fourth Avenue, has been completed. We're gonna go through it and do a final punch list. I know that there's one sidewalk panel that needs to be repaired. I think it got broke throughout the winter, but we'll get the contractor to remove and repair that. The 2019 street improvements include Turkey Lane, Third Avenue, Fourth Avenue, Fifth Avenue South, as well as the alleys in the downtown area. The base portion of the tubinist has been placed, and they're scheduled to come back and place the workhorse tomorrow, weather permitting, or on Monday. Lisa touched on the bridge, so unless you have any questions, I'm gonna skip that. Aztec is gonna come in and do the chip seal on Monday. It's probably a two-day job, I think. Should be done with that, so. The Salzman County Road 65 drainage project, the contractor was in today, did the directional drilling under the highway, and a pipe has been pulled through. So they have the catch basin to put in on the south side, and then the riprap on the north side. And that project should be completed by the end of next week. County Road 65 sidewalk project, it's my understanding that Worms Construction will be in mid-July to begin that project. So, that's all I've got, unless you have any questions.
Nope, thank you.
Thank you.
City Administrator Report?
So, this is day number four for me, being on the job. So, it's been great getting to know the staff. It's been really nice getting to know the community as well. We are going to be talking about a couple of things later on on the agenda, but one thing I'll just bring up briefly in my report here is we did have a meeting with Jennie O. Turkey Store. I believe that meeting was held on Tuesday. Yeah, today's Thursday, so I think it was Tuesday. Maybe it was yesterday, I can't remember. But, anyway, one of the things that we wanted to talk, or begin the discussions with them about was their average flow, as well as their BOD that is coming in to the plant from their operations. And so we just began that discussion with them. Because as part of the 2018 wastewater treatment plant improvements, we had estimated some flows in there. Jennie O.'s are coming in significantly higher than what they kind of thought they were going to be. And so, we just wanted to begin those discussions with them, so that if the revisions have to be made, that we can get those revisions done, hopefully still within that design period that we have talked about as part of the 2018 project. So, that's really all I need to say about that for now. We are gonna have another meeting with them on July 8th to talk about it in more detail. And then there's a couple other things on the agenda that discuss sort of keeping that process moving forward. So, that's all I have, unless anybody has any questions for me right now. But, that's about what I have for the moment.
Any questions? All right. All right, we're on to, and by the way, thank you, we're glad you're here.
Thanks.
The LM CIT insurance quote, who's, Tessa?
We received a quote from the lead for our insurance. Our policy goes from May 15th to May 15th. Typically, by the time we get the quote, it's usually after the date that it will renew. The quote for 2019 to 2020 came in at 81,408, which was an increase over this past year of 73,843. I looked at what went into the increase. There wasn't much for significant claims. A lot of it was some new equipment that was purchased. With this, our coverage has a $5,000 deductible and a $15,000 aggregate deductible. The Public Utility Commission approved at their June 10th meeting to approve this insurance quote, and then to go with option two, which was waiving the monetary limit on the [inaudible 00:22:51] liability and to keep the deductible as an offer. We're just looking for action to continue with the lead for our property and liability insurance.
All right, can I get a motion to approve?
So move.
All right, can I get a second?
Second.
Home fair say aye?
Aye.
I'll pose, motion carried.
I was just gonna say that was option two, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Yep. Then Resolution Number 2019-34 authorizing the city administrator to file an application with the Minnesota Management and Budget Office for the purpose of a wastewater treatment facility project.
So, as we mentioned, for wastewater treatment plant, we're looking at some significant improvements down there. And to fund that, we submitted an application for state bonding dollars. This was done last week, it was due June 14th. And part of it is they need this resolution passed by the governing body. The Public Utility Commission has approved it, but we need this also through the city council as well, showing your support for this project.
Is there, this goes, sorry, this goes back to the, maybe this isn't the right time, maybe it's the July 8th meeting with Jennie O. But, is there, you know, being that if we're gonna build out the wastewater plant to, do we have contracts in place? So, we're gonna put, you know, the utilities department's gonna put a lot of money into the wastewater treatment plant. And to, let's say Jennie O. goes away, not saying it happens, but just as a, as a, something in writing saying, you know, there will be some type of support if they decide, you know what, the plant's not working quite the way it needs to, we're gonna have to cut back our production to half, or something like that, whatever. You never know what happens. But I believe they had, there was something years ago in place for the existing plant, built plant, when we did major modifications to the wastewater treatment plant. Just saying, maybe we should take a look at that, see if we can find out what types of agreements we had for being, you know, that's substantial, what are they, three quarters of the wastewater treatment plant that goes through there is...
They are a large portion of the...
Very large portion of the wastewater treatment plant, so.
One thing that has been done, we had a water wastewater rate study done last year, and they are looking at revising the scope of how the rates are done, where more of it's focused on the base fees to make sure that our annual fixed costs relating to the infrastructure is covered versus based off of usage. Obviously, that doesn't help if an industry were to leave.
Right.
But that was going to make sure that our infrastructure costs will be supported and made.
Okay, all right, sounds good.
Okay.
Thanks.
All right. Can I get a motion to support the Resolution 2019-34?
I'll make a motion.
Can I get a second, please?
Second.
Okay, first and second. Home fair say aye?
Aye.
Pose, motion carried. Special assessment for sold tax forfeiture properties, you gonna talk on that too?
I'd like to mention, we had some lots sold in the latest option, which comes down to tax forfeited lots. The city does hold special assessments on these four parcels. And as a consequence, you have the option, we can either request to have these paid in full. We can assess these on their tax rolls, we can modify the terms if you wish. We spoke to a couple neighboring communities to see how they handle their tax forfeited parcels. The terms that they seem to use have been, if they are not paid in full, then are added to their tax roll. It's come into assess over seven years. As far as the interest rate, staff would recommend tying that into how we charge for our special assessment policy and how we've done other kind of add-on projects with the [inaudible 00:31:59]. With that, we typically do 2% over the average [inaudible 00:32:15]. So, with this, once these properties were purchased, it is their responsibility to handle these assessments. We would like some directive from the council on how you wish for those to be done. If you would like to give the property owners the option to add these to their assessments, or, and if no, what the terms?
Well, first of all, I don't think we can, we decided at the last meeting that we would need the assessments wherever they were. I think we actually did cut them in half, or cut them down significantly to get the...
Yeah, not if I don't base on what the property, how it would be.
Right. And seeing what the purchase prices were and everything, and that these assessments have been paid for, I don't know how many years, 10, 12 years, my opinion would be to request them being paid upfront in full. Just because, you know, the prices were lowered significantly on the, on the lots. And my logic is, someone who were bought them, now they go on the property tax rolls, they bought them very cheap. And they look to sell the lot for probably market value. They're gonna sell them for potentially significantly more, and the assessments will still be sitting out there.
Can we tie that to it, where if they do sell it, it has to be paid in full before it's sold? If they sell before, you know, your so many years?
The thing is, it was known that those assessments were out there prior to the sale, so.
But I don't, go ahead, Lisa.
One individual bought two lots in daylight court and the industrial park land, and they were not aware of the sizable daylight court assessments. He had intended to pay all of the assessments right away, but then after learning the amount of daylight court ones, I don't think he's prepared to be able to pay for both of those assessments at this time. And I think he would probably like the option to be able to defer at least to daylight court one. I don't think he's concerned about the industrial park one. If they're not deferred, I think he probably would combine the two lots that they're joining in, so it would be just one, one build, not two. But he was looking at possibly doing more like patio homes, which is better suited, 32 lots, but a little more risky if you gotta come up with a $25,000 one. So, things to consider.
Right. Can you break it up that way? Say, one, pay in full like the industrial property. Can you do that? Say, that one we'd like paid in full?
You could add $1,000 on if it says tax spent over $1,000, that it should be paid immediately if it's under. Because the industrial park is a $11,000, so you could say if it's less than $20,000, which would be [inaudible 00:33:55].
Is the merging the two lots, is that what they're planning on doing, to make one big one?
He hadn't decided what he wanted to do, he couldn't understand the market, but he said that when he purchased it, he wasn't aware, didn't say on whatever documents he was looking at, what the actual assessor wanted to spend in contact with.
Cause I know when I looked at those lots, I was told that if I didn't build on it within a year, I paid both those assessments. So is that still a thing?
I wasn't aware of the year structure.
That's, that's just what I was told from the last administrator.
Minutes from the council said that the lots would be combined, the assessment would be combined if there was just one house.
Yep, that's what I was told. I just, that he put a year on it.
Yeah, and they made it into the minutes.
That pushed me away right away, so I didn't know.
All right, what would you like to do?
I'm, I mean, I'm fine with $20,000 or less, pay it upfront. Anything over that, we can assess it on the taxes.
Can you set a different year, five years, seven years, does it matter?
You can choose.
I don't know, you wanna wait another seven years to have assessments paid on that? City's got...
They've been, they've been somewhere for that long, I'm not getting...
I know, but it's basically the taxpayers' money's been sitting in there for that long and, you know, the infrastructure and stuff, so.
I'd rather see something get built on it than pushback, because all of a sudden all they gotta come up with all this money.
Oh, yeah.
If they could build something on it right away.
Maybe tie it to something like you had, the deal you had was, you know, build something on it within two years, whatever, then we'll defer it for seven. But if something's not happening with the lots in a year and a half, two years, then blue payment for the remainder of the assessment, how's that sound?
Are you going with if it sells, it's gotta be paid then at that point?
I think it would have...
I kinda like that idea myself, because if you didn't pay, who knows what was paid, especially with that one out there. They didn't pay a heck of a lot for it.
I wanna say it was like two grand a lot over there or something, to that effect.
Maybe you're just gonna try to turn around and sell them, and then the assessment's still out there and...
Right, still not paid.
Okay, who do you wanna word it?
Anything under $20,000, paid upfront.
Do it.
The residential lots, over seven years, at whatever the market rate, 2% over prime or whatever it was, plus, but if nothing is happening with those lots in two years...
The building permit is not pulled?
Building permit is not pulled within two years, it becomes a blue payment after two years. And if the lot is sold, then the assessments get paid upfront, right? Can't sell without paying assessments.
So, if the building permit is not pulled after two years, then you want immediate payment on the balance, is that what you're...
I think at that, at that, yeah, that sunset date, then. The balance should be, should be paid upfront.
All right, there's...
Is that two years from the date of sale?
Yeah, I think that, that's logical.
We will bring those then at the next meeting for resolution.
Okay.
So, we're not making a motion on this then?
Yes, just...
So you made a motion, then?
All second.
Second, okay, first and second, home fair say aye?
Aye.
Pose, motion carried. Pay voucher number one, 2019 street improvements.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we submitted pay voucher number one for the 2019 downtown street improvements for Rowley Brothers in the amount of $167,586.21, and recommending payment at this time.
Can I get a motion to approve?
So move.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Home fair say aye?
Aye.
Pose, motion carried. Grass cutting notice, nuisance. Anything, anybody have any questions or concerns? Okay.
Mallard.
Yep. Approving of the destruction order for above properties listed, can I get a motion to approve?
So move.
Okay, can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, home fair say aye?
Aye.
Pose, motion carried. Police Department recruitment, chief?
So Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we had added this to the agenda, we have a part-time officer that's in the final phases of getting a full-time job with the other department, as well as one of our full-time officers is towards the end of a conditional job offer as well, which if everything is completed and he accepts, we would be down the officer again. So our thought process was, and the discussion we had, the city staff and department head meeting earlier this week, was to create an eligibility list to basically have a jumpstart on a potential hiring process as officers leave, as well as create a pool of applicants we can draw from. As people come and go part-time, we don't believe will be long-term like we had in the past, partially with the number of full-time jobs available, as well as just the ability to be able to move throughout the state with the number of jobs that are out there right now, so. I did speak with Albany, Sock Center, and an email went out today from other neighboring agencies to maybe do a joint hiring effort, so everybody's drawing from one pool, and everybody's saving time, money, and effort in this situation. Probably would be on a yearly basis, we'd like to have the eligibility list good for a year, and then if any of these departments or ours would like to, or need to hire from the pool, we can go down the list and speak with the candidates, if they're still available, if we need to add to the list or anything like that. It is common for larger agencies that are expecting retirements down the road, or they know that somebody's gonna be out on medical disability or something like that to do this process that we're proposing tonight, it would give us a jumpstart, if especially the full-time officer would leave probably about two to three weeks, so we wouldn't have to call it special calls meeting, or wait for the July meeting to accept a resignation, post and those sorts of things.
So chief, are you looking at the application process, an interview, and a background check, and then at that point, they're gonna be ranked?
Right, right, at least to that point.
And then the conditional officer, that'll be the physical and the psychological evals?
We would still bring back to the council any names that would be finalists for conditional offers, and would not be getting hired until successful background, psychological and physical testing.
I think it makes good sense, especially seeing as how the three agencies you mentioned here on the corridor, any one of them could be in the same situation within a year to eighteen months, so at least you've got some folks that are hopefully still out there on the list and available.
Right.
That doesn't create any legal jeopardy with when a position does actually come up and not posting the position.
I don't believe that's been an issue at all with other departments, the only thing that might make this a little more interesting is having several departments involved. I know that Albany has been speaking with their legal council as far as how that would work, we're gonna modify it in application so that each department has parts in it that they're comfortable with, as well as everybody's logo or names would be on the top of the application, so the applicants would be aware that it's not for just one department, it potentially could be for three, four.
And the candidates would be, obviously know that this is not an open position at this time.
Right.
Be told that upfront.
I think as long as you advertise it very clearly, that it's for a hiring list for a year to eighteen months.
I think, you know, obviously, you've probably done your due diligence on the legal ramifications of it, but have we bounced it off Demick to make sure that there's nothing, you know, other departments do this, is that correct?
Right.
Larger departments?
Right.
The only thing I, the only reason I say that is, let's say now a job opening opens up, and you, you know, some other people kick wind of it, and you have this pool of candidates, and somebody else that didn't get in on the hiring, whatever, pre-hire interviews and stuff, says, hey, I wanna, I wanna apply for that job, and you say, no, we already have candidates, and they, well, you know, does that create any?
You do, because you have it posted, because you started a process already with this pool, here you are, potentially missing out on some applicants that graduate later, or that may be available at a later date. The benefit to it, like we were talking about, is you can have a pool of applicants available. If that pool, you come down the list and you get to a point where you're not satisfied with what candidates are left, you can definitely open up another process.
Okay.
Is there a deadline on it? Like, do you put a deadline on it, or do you just keep it open?
You always put a deadline to it, whether it's six months or a year, we're recommending a year just so we're not coming back here so frequently.
Right, but I'm saying like, everybody's gotta have their application by twenty.
Yeah, it'd be like our normal application process, it'd be a two-week open period, and there'd be a deadline to it.
Okay.
Sounds like a D D research.
As long as it's perfectly legal to do it, I have no problem.
Yeah, and we'll run by anything with Scott prior to, because it is such a joint effort, we have hired in the past with Sock Center, but generally, it's been a department takes the lead, and then the other, whether it's Melrose or Sock Center, then piggybacks on the interview and accepts the part-time officer as a secondary officer.
Okay, can I get a motion to approve?
I'll move.
All right, second? Okay, first and second, in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Thank you, chief. Old business. Ordinance number oh-six-twenty dash twenty nineteen dash one, an ordinance amending Marrow's City Code, Chapter ninety-two, right-of-way management regulations, so allow outdoor seating on public property and official title in summary. Do I have any questions? Anybody have any concerns?
I see that the description of it is significantly reduced. Feels better as far as reading it, it's fairly easy to understand, I think, but I still don't know that I agree with requiring a permit to put a bench out in front of your business. I realize it's in the city right-of-way, but, you know, looking, I was in, drove through Sock Center yesterday, and businesses got stuff sitting all over on the sidewalk close to the building, and I can't imagine that they have permit for everything that was sitting on their sidewalks over there, and.
Been talking with Scott Demick, he recommended a permit as opposed to any other process because that way, yeah, there's a violation. The city hasn't met that, I wish to say, I'm sorry, your permit is held on your ballot.
Yeah. Yep, and I understand that angle, but there are a million things that we do every day in our lives that doesn't require a permit, such as mowing our grass, or planting a certain type of grass in our yard, you know, we just got through doing a destruction order for somebody that's not mowing their lawn, I'm pretty sure they don't have to have a permit to mow lawn or plant grass in their yard, pretty sure if it's not following the ordinance on there, we can rectify the situation without making the business owners come in to file a permit, say, this type of bench we have, this is what we wanna do. There's something else in here about permitting.
There is mention of a fee, or the staff recognizes that you desire not to charge fee for this, that's what we find, it just means.
Yeah, and it's.
There is a requirement fee in the future, you don't have to do an ordinance amendment.
And it's not even the fee that bothers me so much, it's the hassle for the business owner, if they wanna put a bench right out in front of their business, that doesn't really take up much of the actual sidewalk that gets used, because people typically walk in the middle of the sidewalk, not right along the building.
But well, if you have a business owner that maybe puts it in a checker pattern, so it makes you force, forces you to walk right in front of their business, you know, they could.
I thought one way or another, we were gonna require them to at least pick up some sort of a guideline.
The four foot, yeah, there's a guideline here, that's a good, it's decent, the four feet from the curb toward the business, that has to be clear walkway. I mean, the ordinance is, I mean, it's okay the way it's written, there's enough teeth in this to walk up to them, be able to walk up to them and say, you know what, you're not following ordinance, you gotta fix the situation. The other thing that this thing mentions is, applicant must have the city of Marrow's as additional insured on their business liability insurance, provide evidence of such a part, such as part of the permit process. Now the business owner, the bench out there, now they gotta contact their insurance company and put the city of Marrow's as a covered entity for their bench they have on their sidewalk. It's absolutely nanny state, I'm sure you've all heard that term, but I don't think there's an issue with it. People could put a bench out there, and you could tighten it down if it becomes a problem, I guess, require a permit if it becomes a problem.
Scott Demick recommended that condition, he said if there was an umbrella, oh, and it flew over to the neighboring window, the city would be potentially responsible for replacing that window because of the insurance, and so this, by having insurance, that the city then is part of it, and we did check with State Farm, and they said this is normally customary, and it's not unusual.
If my car starts rolling down the street and hits another car, I am held liable for that, that's my car. So I'm sure if an umbrella flew off somebody else's, somebody else owned the umbrella and it flew off it, most likely would be that insurance, that company's insurance, correct?
Yeah, but if we allow the umbrella to be on a city sidewalk, that's kinda where our liability comes in, where I don't know, with the exception of GM getting called in the lawsuit, when you're called, car rolls away, you know, who else is gonna be involved?
We allow them to be on the street, they'll park down the road, right?
This is county road.
I'm just saying, it's, it's.
I know, but I'm gonna take it that I'm gonna listen to our attorney on this one.
You know what, you can find liability in everything, I mean, we have so many sidewalks in town with a little chip out of them, some of these stubs are torn, that, yeah, we get a lawsuit filed. There are, there's a million different things you can file a lawsuit about. This is, my opinion, it's ratcheting the screws down on business a little more than they already are, businesses have a hard time following all the regulations out there. If you wanna add a bench on the sidewalk, let them add, let them put a bench out there, without the hassle of.
So in essence, in essence, you're thinking it's micromanaging?
Absolutely. That's my opinion.
And your suggestion is they just come in and pick up a copy of the ordinance?
Yes, yes, everything else, I mean, there's so many ordinances we follow every day that, you know, we do the spring walkthrough, and we call them out on the ordinance violations, and people typically, they by and large are fairly responsive to them, I'm assuming. Ninety percent of them, I'm sure get taken care of just by mentioning to them, but we don't, we're not, we're not a suburban, you know, entity that, Minneapolis-St. Paul, that needs to submit permits.
Well, I know, and I know we talked about permitting a meeting or two ago on this very issue, and I guess my concern was, as long as they just signed something that says, yes, I received the copy of the ordinance.
Right.
I thought that was gonna be sufficient. Now, the mayor believes that illegal opinion from the city attorney carries a little more weight than my suggestion, but.
Yeah, and we probably shouldn't have a zip line in the park if we're worried about liability either. Desk golf, where you gotta walk across the river bridge, you might fall in the river. And there's, you know, there's a million things that a person could get hurt doing in the city, on city property. We have swings, well, you know, kids get hurt on swings, too. You can't see a bench sitting on the sidewalk. I don't know, I'm just saying, it's, it's.
Okay.
There's so many things you need a permit to do in this, everywhere, that throw another one in there, put a little bench out in front of your business, seems like overkill.
Justin?
I'm kinda with him, I, like I said, I was, I mean, I'm fine with the permit, as long as there's no fee, if that's what we wanna do is permit, but, I mean, I guess on that insurance part of it, if they have to do that, I mean, how much, you know, how much is it? Is it gonna all of a sudden be burdensome that they're just not even gonna do it? Where I'd rather see them actually do it, put some stuff open, so people can sit and watch, than be like, nah, it's gonna be an extra two hundred dollars a year for me to have a bench sitting on the sidewalk, guess what, I'm not putting a bench outside my business.
Rob?
I think that there's no charge to it, takes a little edge off, it's, I agree with Tony, sometimes it's kind of a, like, odds and ends, little things that people don't wanna come in for, but sometimes it's even the extra fifteen to thirty dollar fee for everything you wanna do, so if that's not there, and Mr. Demick thinks we need to do something different, I guess I'd also have to follow his guidance, but maybe not necessary if we don't pass that part.
So, when somebody, if somebody comes in for a permit, for a bench on Main Street, what are, what are you gonna, what are you gonna, what are we gonna ask them, or what do we, what do we need proof of, is this, I mean, is this a two-hour sit-down to go through what they're gonna?
See, it would be probably a one-page ordinance, I've read an understanding ordinance, here's gonna be a copy of the insurance department, we max, signature, not a whole lot to it, I would imagine. We try to keep things as simple as possible, we don't want permits even for a shed, we try to email everything out, we tell them they can send everything back by, you know, just give you a fat, maybe I try to, we try to win the permit as easy as possible.
I wish Dina was still here, it'd be interesting to know if it would even require an additional rider to most of the business's current insurance coverage, and it may very well not, I just, I guess I can't say.
I did talk with Dina by phone, and she's the one who said that it's normal in customer and that it would not be a good deal.
Do you know if it comes with a charge, though, even if it's?
I did not think that.
Cause it might be easy to get, but it comes with a fee, right?
Cause they love to sell insurance. Everyone does.
Can't imagine having a bench out front, it costs a whole lot to insure, but you never know.
Anytime you ask them, you should be insured percent.
What do you guys wanna do?
I would make a motion to go forward with the, what is it, the shortened version three, without a permit, without requiring a permit, just have it in the ordinance, these are the regulations you need to follow.
So just make it an ordinance?
Just make it an ordinance. Is that a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. We have a first and a second, so basically, they don't need to get a per, permit, or talk to it with the insurance writer?
Well, that's still in, that's still in the version three, the insurance writer, or the version three, that's still in there, it's just not requiring them to come here, you know.
So am I looking at version one here?
That's.
I'm not sure I understand the motion on the table.
I know.
Just make it an ordinance, whatever's written the way it is, without a permit.
Without the permitting requirement.
But still requiring the insurance.
That was, yeah, that's part of that, yeah.
And within your part, it's not something similar, you know, the ordinance and providing insurance, or we're not even in that.
Well, no, if you have it as an ordinance that they have to have that covered, I mean, if it ever did come back, I mean, I guess this is a Scott question, if it ever came back to the city saying the umbrella flew into the window, well, it's in the ordinance, like, you have to have it covered if it, I mean, the city's not liable, I don't know, I mean.
I just need to be clear with the authority.
Right, I guess we can ask Scott further if that's fine, but.
So in essence, six twenty nineteen, you're just eliminating the section A, is that what your motion is?
Six twenty nineteen.
Tony, right here?
Just the permitting.
Yeah, I'm looking at it.
Section A will get eliminated?
Right.
Just item A one?
Section two.
Are you getting rid of both, um, A, one, two, and three?
Well, all three is the insurance writer, so just be perfectly clear on that.
I think the reason for number two, which we recommended by Scott, is if someone was tripped over a chair that was in a, left sitting all the way from the table, and falling and getting injured, perhaps falling to the street, or falling to, I'm twenty-one, yeah, or whatever.
Yeah.
Is this something that can be amended if we approve this tonight, and then in a month from now, we gotta change it, is that, or a year, whatever, I'm just saying, like, is there any reason it can't be changed?
No, you can change it any, anytime, the city ordinance is correct.
Go ahead.
Well, there's a motion on the floor, I just wanna make sure I understand what the motion is, and that is the removal of the A section, or the A portion under section two?
However we get rid of the permitting requirement in there, so just saying, you know, yeah, you need the insurance, but you don't need to come in and get a permit.
And Mr. Clausen, I understand what you're saying, but I'm gonna vote on something here, I wanna make sure I know what I'm voting on, you know, specifically what I'm voting, you know what I'm saying? I wanna know exactly, get rid of the permitting is fine, if you're talking about removing the A portion of section two, then I understand.
I honestly don't know how that would be worded, as far as reorganizing section A, section B, section C, might have to move number three, three A, maybe we need to bring that back.
May I make a suggestion? Item A, if you just remove the word permitting, and then you remove item. Item A, if you just remove the word permitting, and then you remove item number one, item A1, excuse me? I think that covers what you're asking.
Okay. Can we add that, can we amend the motion to reflect removing permitting and one under A?
So removing the word permitting, because that's really the only thing that references permitting under item A, and then removing item A1, which is the application for administrative permit.
Thank you.
Colleen, would you like to say something?
The only caution I would have for you, Tony, and the rest of the council, you would use the analogy of, you know, if you drive on the street or something happens, you know, they can't come back and sue you. The street is designed for the car to drive on it. The sidewalk is, was not intended, nor was it, it was designed and intended for people to be able to walk on that sidewalk, perhaps ride bikes, skateboards, whatever. It wasn't designed or intended for seating, that wasn't what the intent of the sidewalk is. I think the only reason that a permit is required is not to put an extra burden on the business at all, that's not the intent. It's simply a way for the business to acknowledge that they have read this ordinance. That's really what it was intended for, so that they see that they are holding the city harmless in anything that would happen. Because a business could come back to you now and say, I know nothing about this, it's not on my radar to look at ordinances at all. I am not aware that this existed within the community. That's the only cautionary tale I would have. You certainly have a right to do whatever you would like, but I just wanted to give that information to you.
And I fully understand that. I just really feel like it's such a, I don't, I don't know, maybe it would bite me in the butt just by, you know, just letting people look at the ordinance and put any bench out there that they want, but it's pretty tight the way, the way it's written as far as the standards.
Right, but I do understand the way Colleen's saying that, although, I mean, to make sure they didn't read it. Because that is easily, easily enough-
And I look at all the other things that are, that are out there. The way people could get hurt on a city piece of property, and it just seems like such a minor, a minor hazard, if you will, compared to a lot of the other stuff that we have in the community.
I'm thinking if you're talking percentages, it's way, way down there, I, I understand what you're saying. Now, under A, part three, we'd put a period at the, after providing evidence. Because there is no permitting process.
What about like crazy days, and you have all this stuff, I mean, so-
There is, item receipt actually also contains language, actually, item V6 talks about events where the city can require removal of seating areas during key areas, key times when there's known to be a risk for more people, that kind of thing.
Right, but what if, when they're selling all their stuff down Main Street, like next week's gonna happen, do they have to come in and get this though?
There's not like crazy days, stuff like-
This is not a permitting, you can just help with seating.
Oh, just-
Um, item receipt deals with denial or revocation of the permit, and that's where really you get into the meat of why you have a permit. It talks about if there is a violation, how you would resolve it, how you would work through it, how you would tell them that they could no longer continue to have whatever the concern is in that location. And you pretty much have to remove both of items C, if you would take away the permit portion, which really takes away the city's ability to say you've got to remove this from the right of way. So just so you're aware of that.
Or change it to denial of the right to have a bench on. Or you just put in there, any violations will remove the right to exercise the subordinance in front of your, your property.
How many times are we gonna send this back to Scott?
Hey, I'm just sticking up for business owners, that's it, so. And, and, sorry, but we've been here for an hour, and we're just having a discussion.
Well, we've gone through this, we had what we sort of were looking at, our attorney came back with something that would cover us the best way.
Well, we requested at the last meeting, what did we request? One page and no permit? This body did, right here.
I apologize, I'm not gonna eat dog on page, I got one page and in the front deck, and it does kind of, you know, obviously, go away stuff on the topic of the adoption. I worked as hard as I could with the attorney to try to reduce it as much as possible, and also to simplify it by adding headings and such, so it's easier to understand what elements are actually applicable to what areas. I apologize, not being able to shorten further, still keep the liability to me, the citizens.
All right, there is a motion made, and there's a second, so let's get this voted on. You got it your way how you want it?
I'm getting a clarification though, because if you're not gonna have permit, you're gonna have to take C all over, you're gonna have to change C into my, just so that I know what the motion is.
Alter the C to something that, because there's no permit, except that applies to the permit.
As I understand it, you'd like C to say any violation will remove the right to have a first evening?
I think that for a period of one year. I don't know, does that make sense? Or until the situation is, I don't know.
Is there any wiggle room in there in case some kids decide to move the stuff out and throw it in the street or something, and then the business owner gets blamed for it?
Well, it's part of having, it's part of having a bench out there, right?
All right. Is it clarified enough for you?
I have what I need, with the motion, yes.
All right. Okay, there was a first and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Okay, motion failed. Does anybody want to make a motion on the action that was presented to us from Lisa?
Well, I don't necessarily know that, that we're, have to be that concerned about the lawsuit issue, it just seems like, and I don't want Lisa to spend three hours modifying and stuff. But the majority of the A portion of section two can be removed. The word permit more or less has to be removed throughout the entire document, if I'm not mistaken. And there has to be some modification to the C portion.
I'm sorry, I think we're in the period of-
Oh. I'm not that far off with Mr. Claussen, but it's hard for me to, a ye vote for something that looks like it needs quite a bit of modification yet, or, or changes. Clarification changes. It would appear to me is that the section two, the majority of the A portion needs to be removed, with the exception of clause two, if I'm not mistaken. Because it refers to liabilities and permits, and there isn't a permitting permit, correct? The word permit that's in the ordinance needs to be removed because we're not requiring a permit. Am I correct?
Correct. You can require a permit for note B, or you can require a note permit, so you're suggesting still to continue with the note permit?
And I believe Mr. Claussen's point is that they shouldn't have to come in and fill out a permit. If they come in and get a copy of the ordinance and sign a document that says, I received a copy of the ordinance, and off on their own they go.
Right.
And I, I think that was something that might have been suggested a meeting or two ago.
Yes, right.
Still proving insurance and so forth that's written in there.
Well, in the clause two, part A, section two, the property owner, business owner in the city shall enter into a hold harmless agreement as provided by the city, exempting the city from all liability claims associated with the outdoor seating use.
I guess I'm, I'm kind of confused at the concern about the word permit, because a permit is simply a piece of paper that, much like the original agreement idea, says we agree to acknowledge that these are the requirements, and there's not much more to a permit than that. So I'm not, I'm not entirely sure, and possibly I'm not hearing enough of the words that you're saying. I apologize for having our time here tonight.
Well, and, and I don't necessarily know that an application to put a bench or an umbrella on the sidewalk is totally necessary, as long as they acknowledge that they understand what the ordinance is. Here's a copy of the ordinance, would you just sign this saying, I received a copy of the ordinance on this date?
That's basically what it is, permit.
Okay, and if, and if it's just a signature, the business name, DBA, the person's name, DBA, and, and a signature on the bottom of the date, that's a, that's a 12-second permit application process. Here's a copy of the ordinance, have a nice day, and I hope, you know, you sell a lot of lemonade. And if this is cleaned up, and, and, I'm not saying there has to be additions or deletions, but it appears some of this would be confusing in its present state.
Would you like me to come back with a permit example for the next meeting, and consider the ordinance? It's too difficult at this point.
Yeah, do you, do you think, Lisa, you can, yeah, I say we table it, I say send it out, and then they can respond back to you directly? You know, you guys look at it and, and work it that way, is that, is that fair?
Fair, yes.
Okay, table. Get rid of A and, yes, okay. Let's see here, okay. So we have B ordinance number, and, yeah, yes. Ordinance amendment city code section 71.19A. Thanks, chief.
Since Scott isn't here to give the eloquent terminology, I'll just run through it here real quick. Right now, we can, the council can establish parking restrictions by ordinance related to specific streets or general areas and parking zones. What Scott and I have talked about and have looked through is that we can also do it by resolution, and just by adding the words by resolution to our current ordinance 71.19, paragraph A, allows a bit more flexibility in creating those restrictions, as well as, from my understanding of it anyway, can make it a little more easier of a process if we do choose to move forward with any restricted areas, as are coming up in, in the next couple of agenda items here. Some of those things would be easier to move forward with, from what I'm understanding anyway, instead of creating new ordinances or modifying ordinances every time. Resolutions could be created that would basically be an addendum to the ordinances, the best way I understand it.
Primarily for seasonal parking issues?
Right, seasonal or small areas that, instead of taking a whole stretch of roadway, it could be maybe a portion of a block that would be restricted or something.
That's good. Any questions? All right, can I get a motion to approve section 71-19A?
So moved.
Okay, a second? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carried. Resolution number 2019-35. Resolution requesting establishment of winter parking restrictions on County Road 13, Second Avenue Southeast in the city of Melrose. Anybody have any questions on that? Can I get a motion to approve that, please?
So moved.
Can you get a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Resolution number 2019-36, designate no parking zone on Turkey Lane Southeast in the city of Melrose. Questions or concerns? Can you get a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion, but I have heard how much, from at least three people, how nice it is on Turkey Lane with no cars parked on right now. You know, there was a couple of them here or there, but it's been so clear, they're like, oh my God, they're like, I wish it could just stay this way.
Yeah.
So.
And a couple of business owners.
Down the road.
Yeah, and a couple of business owners too.
To second the motion, I believe.
All right. Chris, a second, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carried.
Could we just clarify that for people that are looking, what part of Turkey Lane that specifically is?
So that will run from, on Turkey Lane from the east side of Second Avenue Southeast, County Road 13, to Third Avenue Southeast. The majority of that is drive over driveway or drive over curb for Melrose feed mill to come in and out with their trucks. There's probably gonna be about two to three parking stalls that would be lost on the south side, on Turkey, on, on the feed mill side of the street, that would be lost.
Only the south side.
Right, only the south side.
So we're gonna get signs up there, in there?
Okay, thanks.
And, and my request is we'll, we'll do face-to-face contact with the businesses affected in the area, and/or a letter, so that everybody's aware when it does go into effect.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Phone system upgrade? All right.
At our last meeting, we brought you the quote from RVIG, we're looking to upgrade our current phone system, and there was two options, one to lease the equipment and one to purchase the equipment. At the May meeting, it was requested to do the phone upgrade and the internet upgrade at the same time. Since that last meeting, Councilmember Claussen, I believe, has spoken with our sales representative at RVIG, and was requested to leave the internet upgrade at this point out of it.
Yeah, yeah, plus I, if I could just throw some more information out there. One of my concerns was that we weren't looking at a, a third-party phone provider for the phone service, because there's a lot of IP telephony providers out there that operate over the internet and stuff, so. I did get a quote from them for our number of phones, actually a few less than what we have today, just thinking that maybe we could get rid of a few phones, but, anyway, their monthly total that they put on here is $851. But, talking to Eric and going through all their services and stuff they provide, the direct dial numbers, you know, we have more than one direct dial number. We have a lot of direct dial numbers, whether or not we need them, I don't know, but they're all quoted in here, and maybe that can be figured out, whether or not we actually need two, five, six numbers to all these different phones around the city. Or if we can have a, you know, have a backhaul to the city center, and they get written over our internet connection, or, or whatever to there. Because there's all kinds of FCC charges and stuff like going on with it. I'm not saying that we shouldn't, at this time, change any of that, but, long story short, when I look at what the additional expenses from RVIG to this IP telephony provider would be, you're talking probably $2,000 to $200 a month with this other organization. But it leaves a lot of support to be done for somebody in-house, so-
So if there's a hardware issue, we're really kind of left hanging because nobody-
Yeah, or there's an issue with the phone routing, or the phone system's down, or whatever. Well, you don't have local support, so, just looking at their numbers and stuff makes me feel a lot better going with RVIG for the, probably the hosted, if that's what we want to do, being you have the support there, so. So anyway, my recommendation would be to go with RVIG's hosted system, so.
Thanks for your hard work on it, Tony.
And not because Joe and Justin work for RVIG.
I had no part of it, I stayed away. All right.
So.
Well, it's up to you three.
Yeah.
We're kind of out of the slot.
Right, and I, I think, you know, I requested the internet because I don't know that we need 100 meg down and 100 meg up, or whatever use was, I think we can try it, we can always up it later, if it's not too onerous uploading, so. In my mind, the biggest uploads we do is, I'll stall- do is us downloading our council packets to me because they're pretty sizable, and it goes really quick for me. So I don't know that we need a larger upload speed than we have today, so... It drops it down quite a bit from, if you go with a 100 by 100, meaning 100 down, 100 up, that is like $265 a month. If you go with 100 download and 20 meg up, it's only $65 a month. The upload speed costs you a tremendous amount more, so we can always up it later, so...
Okay. Can you make a motion?
I just...
Hmm?
Which quotes?
Well, I know there was two options. One was a little heavier on the front with the hardware and a little less on the monthly rent, and then the other was vice versa.
Yeah, I think the managed is what we were leaning toward, right? So we get the support, phone breaks down, they come in.
The Public Utility Commission had also taken action at their May 13 meeting. Their recommendation is to go with the leased option, the managed option.
Right. The leased option or managed, or, yeah, that's the leased option.
Yeah.
Managed, whatever. So I would make a motion to go with the leased option with the lower internet.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, there's a first and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed, abstained. Okay.
Justin, are you abstaining?
Yes.
All right. Part-time streets park and water, wastewater maintenance worker. Everything good with that one?
Uh, not really. So, um, we had gone out and advertised for getting a part-time person for our maintenance position, and there were two people that were in the pipeline that potentially looked at it, and that didn't work out. We had a third person that potentially, we thought, would potentially work out, and that person, based on everything, was not able to work out either. When we started to look at it, what we saw is that when we were advertising the part-time maintenance position, essentially, they are doing the exact same thing as what the full-time maintenance position does. They're just simply doing it on a part-time basis. Um, it's not really part-time, it's really full-time, seasonal, exactly. It's really full-time in the summer, and then it's on an as-needed basis in the wintertime. So what staff is proposing to look at is changing that wage scale out of the part-time position and putting it in with a full-time maintenance position so that it's in that same wage scale as what a maintenance worker is, whether or not they're seasonal or full-time. It really doesn't matter. They're essentially doing the same work. The hours are what makes the difference there, so you're under a certain amount of hours, and as long as you don't go over a threshold, you don't have to worry about the benefit side of it. And we would also like to re-advertise it so that it's clear that this is really a position that's full-time in the summertime and on an as-needed basis in the wintertime, and take out the portion that's related to the wastewater, really make it more about being a maintenance worker position. So that is where we're at with that, and we'd really like to be able to proceed forth with doing it that way.
And Mr. Midendorf, it's grass cutting, it's curb painting, hydrant painting, pushing some snow or sweeping some snow. So that's primarily what this individual's position is, correct?
Mm-hmm. Yep.
All right. Make a motion for it?
Make a motion.
Okay, you make a motion?
Yeah.
Okay, can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, first and second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carried.
Thank you.
Resolution number 2019-37, resolution committing to funding a local match grant for the Sauk River Dam, potential removal, and Rock Arch Rapids replacement project.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, with the Rock Arch Rapids, the council, I think, had previously committed to funding $700,000 of the match for this project. The LCCMR board is looking for some written authorization to do so. If you recall, we came up with that number based on the cost that it would, for us to realign the channel. If we leave the dam in place, we're going to be out of pocket at least $700,000 anyhow. So that was our theory, was that we would commit that amount of money to the Rock Arch Rapids if we could receive the rest of the funding through the grant application. So to aid our approval of the grant funding, we're just looking for a resolution to commit the council to that amount.
Yeah. And there was also the retaining loan, I think that was $250,000 to $300,000.
Yeah, that was our total, yeah. I mean, the craft wall part of it with the channel realigning, we're going to be, if we just do that loan on our own, we're going to be $700,000 or more.
Right.
I make a motion as part of the resolution.
I second that.
Second. Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carried. Each is being moved. Potential land sale, aye.
You want to raise a question on that?
Is that the one over here?
Yes.
Okay. Do you guys know which...
That's what we're talking about.
Uh, no, we're talking about the one by Coburn's.
Oh. Oh, this is the outlot from Burlington Northern Railroad?
Yeah, Freilich and the Cordy House.
So potential land sale referring, refers to a land that was previously owned by a Freilich property. It's located just west of Finkin, um, this building itself, the main street, east side of First Avenue. And that, considering this after meeting with the department, they recommended that the land sale occurs. They also recommended that if the land sale occurs and the land is purchased, that the lots be combined, the lots with the house and the land that's former rail property. They also said, just across the street to the west, there's two small triangles that are on one or adjacent to one parcel, and that the same thing should occur with those two parcels, and that would be, if they'd be purchased, um, combined with that parcel.
Sure. Any questions?
Yeah.
All right. Can I get a motion to approve, please?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Home, favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carried. All right, new business comprehensive plan update?
Jeff has been working with the agent of the planning intern, getting to, who wants to update their company's plan, and is working through the, um, the portions that pertains to data that just needs to be updated. And then he also started on the, um, the goals and policies. There's a segment in your packet from chapter two which kind of gives an idea of the direction that things are going on that. Um, we provided the information that's included in your packet, the number to the planning commission. In that, he asks about public input and asks for suggestions and recommendations that regard. The planning commission recommended that a survey, both electronic and paper version, be utilized to the public input, also public, um, open forum types of meetings, at least one be held. And they also recommended that a committee be formed through the updates to the comprehensive plan in greater detail than would be possible at regular meetings. They did, however, suggest that the previous comprehensive plan update committee, which had quite a few members, it was the full boards of the planning team, um, and the planning commission, or planning commission and council, that that seemed to have, perhaps, too many people. It was upwards of 15 people on the committee. They suggested perhaps maybe having two people or so from each of the relevant boards serve on that committee as well as the governed public. So that is, that is what they, what they suggested, and we've been looking for your blessing also to get consultants to facilitate the public input forums at some point in the future. We're already to inform that. I think that would be more advantageous to have consultants help with that. We're hoping to do most of the actual updating in-house during its cost. Comprehensive plan updates cost upwards of $30,000 to have a staff, or have a consultant do it, and we're hoping to have that significantly less by just doing minimal consulting.
Yeah, I read through part of the, what was provided and stuff, and I think the, you know, the layout or whatever looks pretty good so far, but I think that a lot of public input needs to go into that because there's a lot of things in there that are kind of, you know, very personal, um, you know, personal perspectives instead of, because the cop plan should be what the community wants as a whole, not the, not necessarily us five or city employees or whatever think is appropriate for the city. So I think, yeah, the public forums, maybe a survey would be good, you know, specific questions about, you know, what do you think's important, whatever, you, you know, you know, the game plan or whatever. But, yeah, um, schedule some, get some surveys put together, and a couple of public forums, probably, small committee. I think that's all good, good ideas.
And the thought is, we've been taking several of the other surrounding communities' comprehensive plans and kind of flesh language that seem to be appropriate for Mauro's, but then it's really going to be up to those community surveys to say, yes, this is moving in the right direction.
Right.
Or, no, we really don't like this suggestion. We'd like it changed that way.
Right.
And so that's kind of the aim, instead of starting with, well, here's our, you know, artistic document, um, and starting literally from the ground up. It just gives us a starting point that's moving in the right direction, hopefully.
Right.
And if there are changes, they'll be easy to just, you know, line item, change.
Right. And that may be, you know, this is what we have. It's just ideas. Give us your feedback on what we have right now, if you like it, if you don't like it, type of stuff. That is, so everybody knows it's not set in stone by any means, it's just, right?
Exactly. No, there isn't a set in stone with any of this. It's just suggestions for consideration.
Right. And to go get some of that information from other small communities is probably a good idea, but on the flip side, are we unique or not? You know, are we just copying what they have written down and good enough, or, you know, do we have a different vision than Sauk Center?
Exactly. And that's why we use multiple communities, so we can pick and choose what seems appropriate, but again, that's at the perspective, so we rely heavily on the committee and the community forums to adjust whatever needs to be adjusted to better in Mauro's.
All right.
Just as a follow-up to what Lisa's saying, the one thing kind of to close a circle is, when it comes to the public forum side of it, you know, it's the old saying, if you're from over 30 miles away, you're an expert. What is the council's sense of having somebody from the outside come in and facilitate those versus having internally those facilitated? That would be the only, one of the things we'd kind of want to sense from the council on.
Somebody, are you, are you talking like a professional or somebody like, maybe...
Yeah, you just have somebody come in from, there's many firms that do this type of facilitation. It wouldn't necessarily, I mean, you know, obviously WSB does this type of thing.
Right.
There's others that do that. We certainly could have them facilitate it, and it wouldn't necessarily have to be, you know, an engineering planning firm. It could be somebody that just facilitates the discussion and gets people on track as to where they need to go.
Yeah. I, you know, when you said somebody from the outside, I thought, well, you know, there's somebody that was here for many years who does consulting now, local, knows a lot of background on Mauro's already, but not really involved too much anymore. And I think we, we hit her up, Jane Brown, once in a while for...
Yep.
For fill-in stuff or consulting stuff, too. But just a thought there that if we wanted to go that route, might not be a real bad idea or something, but think about it.
Yeah, it's just something for the council to think about. Certainly, you don't have to make a decision right now.
No. Okay.
From a timeline perspective, we're thinking sometime next year that this process will be finished. So we're thinking long-term, but since we have the interim here, just wanted to kind of bring you up to see what has been going on and what direction we're in at all, so...
Okay, cool.
Sounds good.
All right. Then, uh, Daylight Court lift station and Jennie O. Turkey store easement.
So as, um, as Mike had talked about earlier, the city's in the process of installing a storm sewer pipe in an area that we currently have a lift station. Where the lift station is located, right adjacent to the Jennie O. Turkey store and right actually adjacent to, it's on the west side, if you're familiar with it at all. It's on the west side where their live truck driveway goes into the store. Um, there, the city owns an easement already for where the lift station is. However, where the storm sewer was installed, that's actually part of Jennie O.'s property. So we received an email from John basically stating, "Yep, go ahead. You can put your storm sewer in there." And he said, "And by the way, we, you know, we have no interest in that of his property anymore. It doesn't do us any good because all the utilities that are located on it are essentially the city's." So they are saying, "We're happy to give you the land if you want to go ahead and put together the quitclaim deed, the survey, et cetera. Um, you know, we can, we can just give it to you." For a quitclaim deed, it would be like a dollar. They would sell it to us for, um, rather than a donation. A donation is sort of a different method, and it doesn't work well for projects like this. So my recommendation would be for the council, if you're okay with this, for us to be able to negotiate with Jennie O., get this taken care of. I honestly don't anticipate it would cost more than a couple thousand dollars because there's going to be very little title work in there. Um, the easements already exist, so the research is done for that. This is part of a platted lot, so it's Lot 2, Block 1 in Jennie O. Turkey store. We'd have to have the engineer do a survey works because they're going to have to put the points on there, and they're going to have to describe what part of that lot we would be taking over. So Jennie O. said it's yours. You can have it as long as you do the filing and all the work associated with it. So I have that before the council to get your direction as to how you want us to proceed.
So is this always Jennie O.'s property, or did this accidentally go along with the land sale to Jenn, or the...
From what I can tell, again...
I was just thinking this might have been an oversight when we had, you know, the...
Perhaps. I can't answer that, Tony. You really can't. I can just tell you that...
I can't tell what the property line is there on this guy's...
Well, and, okay, so it's a little hard to see where that dark blue line is. That as, actually is the physical property line that Jennie O. owns. So our lift station, we have a big pink easement over the top of it. So our lift station is contained 100% on Jennie O. property.
On that lot?
Yep. We just happen to have a...
That is, that is a separate lot already from the rest of Jennie O.'s property.
Oh, I'm sorry. The lot itself, I apologize. I should have had the other diagram so you guys could have seen it. The lot itself goes something like this. So this is all of Jennie O.'s, or like, probably right here because this is in it, you know, and this is, um, this is our lift station, so we have an easement for that, but this is the piece that they're saying, hey, if you're going to take this, take all of this.
Yep.
Ms. Colleen, I'd like to do my part right now. So there's, there's the dollar that's required for Jennie O.
No, I can't. I can't accept your dollar, mister. I can't do that, sir, but thank you.
All right.
I'll take it.
[laughing].
All right. Um, so, um, recommend that we move forward with this. Any issues with anybody?
Nope.
All right. Then, you know where we're going?
Yep. I'll just get it. Then it'll just be probably a resolution that you have sold the, or that we purchased the parcel from Jennie O.
Okay. Informational items?
No, is this, that making...
Yeah, that, see, that, um, that's for the Daylight Court lift station. That's what it's named. So, information items, utility commission meeting minutes, and then also there's a utility billing clerk, Carla Van Heel, recognition ward, 35 years, working in our community. I just want to say thank you to her very much for all of her years of service, and enjoy having her here.
I'm here.
So, um, now we're gonna break, we're gonna have a closed meeting now for our craft lot development, so...
So do we adjourn the regular meeting at this time?
We do. There's a language that we have to follow.
Yeah.
So, um, so you want to adjourn the regular meeting or just continue with, just close the current, just close...
Yep, we have to adjourn the regular meeting, don't we?
Is that considered a separate meeting?
We make a motion to close the meeting.
And was it closed?
And then we have to adjourn it later.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, I think we closed it.
Close it so we can go into a closed session, and then we'll come back and adjourn it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right. Okay, get a motion to, um, close the meeting?
I'll make a motion to close the meeting.
Okay, can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carried.
As we go into...